Uh, roll call please.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
May everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Jerry, would you lead us off and read it please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, if everybody would look back at the approval of the minutes from January 15th, 2019. And if there's no corrections, omissions. Entertain a motion.
Kerkowski make a motion to approve the minutes of January 15th, 2019.
Oracle second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye. Item four is a recognition item and it's a resolution for commitment of Chris S. Copeland, a retiring firefighter. Catherine, would you read that into the minutes?
Certainly, resolution 12029-020519, resolution of commendation to Christopher S. Copeland. Whereas Christopher Copeland began his employment with the city of Oak Creek on July 17th, 1989, is an automotive serviceman in the highway department. And whereas Christopher became an auxiliary firefighter on April 6th, 1992, then became a firefighter on November 1st, 1993, for the fire department. And whereas Christopher retired from his position as firefighter effective September 17th, 2018, after a total of 29 years and two months of dedicated full-time service to the city of Oak Creek. And whereas during his years of service, Christopher has performed his duties admirably, looking out for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Oak Creek. And whereas Christopher responded to many major alarms utilizing his skills in firefighting and rescue with dedication and without hesitation. And whereas Christopher has been an emergency medical technician in the state of Wisconsin and was a member of the city's first class of paramedics. He became a firefighter paramedic on March 6th, 2000, and during his career has cared for thousands of citizens who were sick or injured, always delivering caring and skilled emergency care to them. Whereas Christopher conducted many tours and participated in fire prevention activities for the children of Oak Creek during his career. Now therefore be it resolved that the city's best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Christopher S. Copeland and his family in his retirement years. Be it further resolved that his resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Christopher S. Copeland. Passed and adopted this 5th day of February, 2019.
Thank you Catherine. Anybody want to say anything on Chris' behalf? Anybody familiar with Chris? Assistant Chief Kresik?
Thank you Mayor, Council. Just a briefly touch on some items for Chris this evening. Chris was unable to be here tonight, but I know he's very appreciative of this resolution and will certainly pass on the thoughts and comments made this evening. Chris Copeland was dedicated to serving the community of Oak Creek, to serving its citizens, its businesses, and its visitors. That dedication to service, I think, is a direct reflection of Chris' family. Certainly, he learned quite a bit from service from his parents and he reflected that in his attitudes and how he performed his job. Those that knew Chris on a personal level knew that Chris was a very helpful giving person. He was always willing to lend a hand, always willing to help out wherever he could, both on and off the job. Even to this day, Chris still stops by the station, bringing gifts into the station, bringing snacks into the station for the crews. He, that certainly is his personality. It was a one-of-a-kind personality for Chris and will certainly be missed around the firehouse. I think it's fair to go on the record that the men and women of the Oak Creek Fire Department wish Chris the best in his future endeavors and thank him for his years of service.
Thank you Mike. I just want to echo that statement on behalf of the entire council, the residents of Oak Creek. We wish Chris nothing but the best in retirement. We wish him a long and happy retirement. Again, his contributions to the city will be missed. So, again, congratulations on a great career, Chris, and thank you. Motion please.
I'll move to approve resolution 12029-020519, a resolution of commendation to Christopher S. Copeland, retiring firefighter.
Guzekowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Item five is first public hearing. It's consideration of a conditional use permit for a freight terminal, freight yard, freight terminal, transshipment depot, and outdoor storage of vehicles and equipment on the property at 7221 South 10th Street. Applicant is Sam Dickman Jr., Murphy Real Estate LLC. Property owner is Murphy Real Estate LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is January 9th, 2019.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Doug Seymour, the Director of Community Development for the city. And this is a public hearing and a request by Sam Dickman on behalf of Murphy Real Estate LLC for a conditional use permit to reutilize the facilities and the property at 7221 South 10th Street for a freight yard, freight terminal, transshipment depot, and outdoor storage of vehicles and equipment. Our code's way of saying, not simply, you know, basically, a truck operation there. It is an existing business that's been there for quite some time. It's recently vacated. It makes use of that property by bringing in additional business to the city of Oak Creek. The one thing that is zone manufacturing, but it does not allow for the type of truck, truck terminal, storage depot, things of that nature, has a permitted use that requires a conditional use permit. In order to effectuate that, there have to be some changes to the property, most notably increasing the size of the parking lot, which automatically means increasing the size of the stormwater ponds, adjusting the landscape for the parking of those, that equipment that is related to the operation of that business. The Plan Commission has reviewed the particular request for this conditional use permit. They have recommended their approval. And with that, I would ask that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed conditional use permit for the property at 7221 South 10th Street to please fill out an appearance form. When your name is called, please proceed to the podium to address any questions and or comments. The common council, this public hearing is now open.
Thank you Doug. As Doug said, it is a public hearing. We will make three calls. This will be the first. Second call. Third and final call. Now close the public hearing and move on to item sixes, which is consideration of the ordinance for the conditional use permit for the freight yard terminal. Questions from the council?
Yep, go ahead Steve. Alderman Kerkowski, First District. I had no calls from anybody with any concerns over this area. It is in the industrial park, so I didn't expect any anyway, so it's a, seems like an appropriate use for that area. Thank you.
Yes, anything?
Alderman Guzekowski, Plan Commission. We talked about it twice. No issues really came from anyone at either of those two meetings there.
And just to reiterate on that, Doug touched on the parking lot also. The pond's going to be enlarged a little bit for the business. It's a good repurpose of another dark building, so it'll be a good addition. It's a fit in the industrial park and there's very little conversation, so with that, motion?
Kerkowski make a motion to approve ordinance number 2929, to approve a conditional use permit for a freight yard, freight terminal, transshipment depot, and outdoor storage of vehicles and equipment on the property at 7221 South 10th Street.
Oracle second. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Next public hearing is a consideration of Plan Unit Development Amendment for the Target located at 8989 South Howell. Catherine?
Public hearing number two is to consider a request submitted by Merlin Misilek Target Corporation for amendments to the existing Plan Unit Development to allow additional exterior building materials and signs for the Target Building on the property located at 8989 South Howell Avenue. Applicant is Merlin Misilek Target Corporation. Property owner is Target Corporation. Legal description there follows. Date of notice is January 9th, 2019.
Thank you. The Target store and the commercial development at 8989 South Howell Avenue was first developed under Plan Unit Development Ordinance. Now, the Target store, that PUD also includes some of the additional retail out in front. So just to be clear, the changes are the proposed changes to the conditional use permit for the Plan Unit Development do not include the retail, which is out in front, only applies to the Target store. In essence, what this boils down to is as part of the rebranding, refreshing of the brand, Target is doing some changes to the exterior in terms of colors, in terms of signage, and those new standards are exceeding that, which was allowed under the original issuance of the PUD. They've come forward, rendering of the east elevation is on the screen before you this evening. I do have additional renderings if you want to see those, but essentially, it's just a refresh of the, the brand, refresh of the store, something they're doing not only in Oak Creek, but also system-wide. Plan Commission has reviewed this, they've recommended their approval. Again, anyone with any questions or comments, please approach the microphone after giving your name and address, please proceed to address your comments or questions to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you Doug. As Doug said, three calls. This will be the first. Second call. Third and final call. We'll now close the public hearing and move on to item eight, which is consideration of the ordinance to amend that existing PUD. Questions from the council, comments?
I was just going to mention that at the, at Plan Commission, we did talk about this. No one had any heartburn over it, you know, I think the mayor touched on, you know, that CVS pharmacy, you know, not many people know that, you know, that it's even in there, so it's just part of the strategy and the rebranding.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? No, they're basically just touching up the building, putting a new brand to it, and adding a sign on the west side. That's the one thing you don't see here in the description. But there will be a sign to the west side, so. Nothing else? Motion please.
Guzekowski makes a motion to accept ordinance number 2930, the ordinance to approve amendments to the existing Plan Unit Development to allow additional exterior building materials and signs for the Target Building on the property located at 8989 South Howell Avenue.
Oracle second. Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item number nine is an informational summary of the Treasurer's Report. Unfortunately, Barb cannot be with us tonight. She did send me a message just before council. She apologizes, but again, if you have any questions, you are, feel free to contact her at any time. Is the informational, you do have anything in your packet, and if you do have any questions, please reach out to her. Item 10 brings us to informational from our Destination Marketing Specialist, Kristen.
I'm Kristen Craig, Destination Marketing Specialist for the city of Oak Creek. We're in February now, so I thought it would be best to give a recap of 2018 and then talk about what the Tourism Commission will be doing for 2019. I will start first with the presentation and then I will hand it over to Katie Corbin. She is our account representative from Savage Solutions, who is the ad agency that the Tourism Commission works with and has worked with for the past couple of years. So, a little background about the Tourism Commission. It started in 2017, and the Commission utilizes hotel room tax for tourism promotion and development. So, as a group, we thought the best way to use these funds were by creating these community events, not only for the community, but also to bring in people outside of Oak Creek. So, looking back at 2018 goals, we look to increase event attendance, launch the Oak Creek Farmers Market, grow our social audience, and advertise Oak Creek as a place to live, work, and play. We ran 15 total events in 2018. A lot of these events, we ran more than once over the summer, like the food truck tour, beer garden, movie night, and also the farmers market, which ran the duration of the summer. I wanted to share the event attendance ratio between 2017 and 18. We were able to increase attendance for all of our events. The Fall Festival, we had some inclement weather, so we actually had to end that event a little early last year, but otherwise, we gathered information onsite and from our post-surveys, and we have more and more people come to the events each year. I also wanted to share some of the survey results with you. From the feedback, the visitors liked the quantity of events that we were doing and that there was something happening in the square every weekend. There were a variety of vendors, and then attendees also liked that they were free community events and there wasn't a charge to get in. And we also had fun activities for the whole family. I also wanted to include the feedback for improvement. Attendees thought that we could work on parking and directional signage, which we will be working on for this year. Also, they'd like to see more food and beverage options, so we're going to explore ways to work with the Drexel Town Square businesses and maybe run some specials, or even have them come and participate in some of the events. People are getting their information about our events through social media. They also get it through the Current and Acorn. We've done direct mailers and print collateral, and also some radio ads. And we were able to collect that 40% of the attendees coming to the events are from outside of Oak Creek. We do ask for a zip code and the surveys are anonymous, but it just allows us to gather some information, so we are bringing in people outside of Oak Creek and we are hitting those Looking back at the farmers market, last year it ran June 2nd through October 20th, Saturdays from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM in Drexel Town Square. We had homemade, handmade, and homegrown products. We had about 40 vendors each week around the square. We had a variety of vendors, including produce, meats, cheese, bakery, flowers, and local artisans. We also had engaging activities. We had chef demonstrations, face paintings, and musicians, and we also had some fun rock painting activities. Looking back at the media coverage for 2018, Oak Creek was contacted to be the featured city for Around the Corner with John McGivern and Discover Wisconsin. So last year, they went around and they filmed a lot of our events and some of the local businesses, and both episodes will be airing in 2019. And I am going to pass it over to Katie for our social audience.
Thanks Kristen. So this slide shows us a chart of our snapshot when we launched visit OakCreek.com in 2017 and then the same duration for 2018. So what you can take away from this chart is, we're seeing great results. Two things I do want to highlight, users, that is up over 2,000%, which means this is a really effective communication tool. This is how a lot of individuals are learning about these events and learning about Oak Creek. Another thing I want to mention on this page is how individuals are getting to the website. If you see the organic search for 2018 is up almost, actually, like 8,000, over 8,000, so about a 3,000% increase from 2017. And with organic, that's anyone coming from a Google or a Yahoo search engine and putting anything in such as "summer event in southeastern Wisconsin." And because of our search and engine optimization, visit OakCreek.com rises above all the other results, which, which in turn means that these people are going to find Visit Oak Creek more than they would other communities and other websites with the same information. Also a nod to our social channel at the bottom there, our Facebook channel, our likes are up to over 12,000, or excuse me, 12,000.
Okay, so looking ahead to 2019 goals, you all should have gotten a booklet, kind of giving more detail about that, but we are looking to enhance our current events, curate new events, and increase hotel room nights. We're going to increase awareness through effective media presence, build strong relationships with local businesses, and look to partner with the Oak Creek Hotels. This is an example of how we partnered with Cubanitas at last year's Winter Festival. They actually sponsored an ice sculpture, and then a lot of attendees took Instagram pictures with this piece. Some of the new events we're looking to curate, So Newwaki approached us, and they are a third-party agency in Milwaukee for an art exhibition at the lakefront, which is something new that we haven't done before. These art installations would be sometime in the summer. They would stay up for a duration, maybe three weeks or so, and we'd have an opening ceremony, but then during the summer, people could come down, appreciate the art, or if they wanted to have a picnic in the park. So that is something the Tourism Commission would like to move forward with this year. This also hits a strategic action plan item of becoming a city known for special events and connecting public arts efforts with the Tourism Commission. We're also looking at having a live Badger game in the square and painting the town red and partnering with some of the local businesses.
Additionally, we want to increase hotel stays this year. We already have these great events and we're curating a few new events, but we want to attract these national events. You know, the events currently in Oak Creek, they're great for individuals, but not necessarily individuals that will stay a night or stay a weekend. So we want to attract these national events. One of them that, that came up during our ideation session was the National Cornhole Tournament. I don't know if any of you are familiar, it's on ESPN now, but this event attracts thousands of people, and people will then stay the night, stay the weekend, they will dine in Oak Creek and visit the retailers and have that total Oak Creek experience. So this is one of our main objectives in 2019, is to really find these events and partner with them.
So yeah, overall, the Commission is really excited for 2019. If you guys had any questions or comments, I'm happy to answer.
Anybody? Questions for Kristen and everything that's been going on? Mike?
Do you have a date on that Badger game? Paul?
We're looking at October, October 26th, if we can get that. I don't think they have the times released yet, but I can let you know as soon as we have that confirmed.
Kristen, can you describe the Newwaki event? Because that's pretty unique and it's going to be down at Lake Vista, correct?
Yes, it'll be done at Lake Vista Park. It's really tying in fine arts, so Newwaki is looking at tapping into some of the art colleges around like MIAD or UWM and having these local artists come out, build sculptures, maybe interactive, but we'd have multiple sculptures around the path leading up to the lakefront. Maybe the opening day, we'd also tie in dance or have some live music. We even talked about tying in the beer garden that we have at Lake Vista Park. And it'll run about three weeks, so we're thinking about having the opening ceremony, but then the art be onsite for a longer period of time.
Kristen, I don't want to take up any time at the meeting tonight, so if you've got time this week, can we chat about a couple ideas that I've had residents ask me about?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, are you around this week?
Sure.
Okay, I'll give you a call, thank you.
Sounds good.
Kristen, Alderman Dukenyak, Third District, no question, just a comment. I mean, I've been in special events coordination and planning for most of my adult life, and to see what you and the committee have done is incredibly satisfying and refreshing. You're bringing some new ideas, new events, obviously with the numbers that support the activities that you're putting out there. Well done, well done. I mean, it's, as our community grows, the need for special programs and events grows as well, and you, you're doing, and the committee as well, one heck of a job with that, so thank you very much.
Yes?
Alderman Guzekowski, Sixth District. So first of all, just want to clarify, so we're, I see on Facebook, the 1,200-plus users, that's a great number, and that, that's where I mostly see it. Instagram, is that, where else do you connect to Instagram, Twitter, any other?
We don't have Twitter right now. So, we do have it looking at.
And I think your idea of the cornhole tournament, I think that'd be phenomenal. I know that at the Community Center, they host a different, a few times a year, cornhole, and it's got a great turnout, the people come and play and they want to have fun and potentially spend money, but that's just how they do it at the Community Center. It's a really great event, so I think you're on to something there. And then lastly, 40% coming from outside, I like that number too, so I appreciate it, tracking this year-over-year, because that helps all of us look at it and it, you know, kind of just reiterates and reinforces just how worthwhile a lot of these things are.
Andrew?
Just a couple things if I could, Mayor. I echo Alderman Dukenyak's accolades, you know, this thing is still a baby, and Kristen really has been the machine and the engine behind getting this to where it is today and growing it into the future, but I would say, you know, my discussion with Kristen in recapping and strategizing for the coming years and goals, you know, we've taxed her about as, about as much as we can tax her, so really, it's, we got a, we got a nice, you know, stable of events that we do, let's do those better, but really be strategic about those new events that we bring into the community and look towards more, towards partnership and sponsorship versus ownership over those events. And you see that in the Newwaki and the Paint the Town Red, and maybe some of those larger goals with, you know, Cornhole Tournament or whatever, whatever opportunities may arise. So, that's kind of the direction. I mean, we can't ask too much more out of Kristen specifically, to be the kind of the, and it's a team, it's a team, obviously cross, interdepartmental, but you know, Kristen really is the coordinator of all that, so I just want to, want to throw that out there. I think we knocked two really big things out of the park this year in terms of reach with Discover Wisconsin and Around the Corner with John McGivern, that will, I mean, that is a gift that keeps on giving. Those things are played and replayed, and I think that's really, you know, those are played in Arizona, as I recall the conversation being, and really nice to, you know, highlight the city of Oak Creek around the state and even, even wider. Lastly, more of a technical issue, a lot of the aldermen, most of the aldermen and the mayor and the staff, you know, attend, basically, all, some of us are at all of them and a few of us are at most of them. I didn't see the parking strain this year. I saw a little bit of it in years past with a lot of construction going on and things, but I, I think that the solutions the council and its partners in Drexel Town Square have put in place with the freighter parking ramp solution, which obviously maybe takes a little more signage and wayfinding to get there, but also their creative solution with shared parking arrangement with the Zune building, south of the Civic Center. Will pick up 93 spaces or some such off-peak, and we don't have, you know, events going on Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 5:00 typically, so I think that we're probably over the hump and maybe over, can overcome some of the perception issues in the past, because I think the reality is much different than, you know, than the, than the perception. So, again, kudos to Kristen, look forward to 2019, and, you know, keep up the great work.
It's just, it's kind of a, because I sit on the Tourism Commission, it's kind of interesting to see it from the inside, and I see Cory, that would just enter the room, so we appreciate his firm's efforts in this, in this whole process. Leslie Flynn's in the audience too, and she, obviously, in terms of the social side of the business of this, the Commission does a great, great deal of work and deserves a good mention in that process. It's been interesting to be a part of, this has evolved, obviously it continues to evolve, and we're obviously looking forward to continuing to provide some useful events and some community building situations for everyone in the city, and that, you know, we got this, we got the budget on, you know, the state kind of forced their hand that way, and I think we're making the most of it, and I think we're better off for it.
You know, I'll agree, I mean, the number
You know, I'll agree, I mean, the numbers show itself, those were all stated, but really the demand to expand the events in a short time that the Tourism Commission's been here. Dog Day started out a one-day event, it's now grown into two, two days. Beer Garden started out once, now it's up twice, probably going to grow again in years to come, so again, we're always looking for those sponsorships and those partnerships. If anybody out there is interested in that, wants to get more involved in the city, contact Kristin. And we do have an event coming up in February, here's your shameless plug time.
Yes, wow.
Excellent, so put that on your calendars, please, February 11th. Want to thank you, Kristin, again, this is kind of new to the city, I think the residents have taken to it great. I'm out there quite a bit, I hear a lot of positive comments. More importantly, I always had the corny line, discover Oak Creek, celebrate Oak Creek, you're helping get that done, so thank you. All right. Oh, the event is February 16th? 16th. Oh, yeah, oh yeah, you got to put that out there. Around the corner with John McGivern, there is a premiere, will be at the Community Center, Oak Creek Community Center, February 11th, festivities kickoff at 5:00? 6:00, thank you. Screening is at about 7:00. Got that all straight? So we do want a high turnout there, it is quite an honor to be asked to be on that, so again, congratulations to all that helped make that happen. And then we can look for Discover Wisconsin in June, I believe? Great, thank you very much. Item number 11, consideration to approve or re-approve our license agreements with CSAC, BMI, and ASCAP for music licensing for performers and such. Doug, you got it?
And such.
Anybody got it?
The annual, yeah, the annual.
It's really an annual occurrence, and this is licensing for musics, for things such as, you know, at events on the intercom while you're on hold, it just, you know, which never happens, by the way.
Yeah. You're a hold-free organization.
We do. No, it's in recognition of the licensing requirements for the use of commercial property, in this case, music, it's something the city's done, albeit begrudgingly for several years, but certainly something that we're prepared to do.
Any questions? I think we've all been through this before, and we've been here, so motion, please.
Kowski, make a motion to approve the license agreements with CSAC Society of European Stage Authors and Composers, BMI Broadcast Music, Inc., and ASCAP for the rebroadcast of music by licensed performers.
Oracle, 2nd. Roll call.
Alderman-Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Item number 12 is consideration of a resolution for preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise a special assessment power in the municipal code for installation of a 12-inch water main on West College from 27th to South 20th Street, and to establish a public hearing date of March 5th. Come on up, Mike.
Mayor, this is a great project that we're doing up on College Avenue from 27th Street, a little bit east, we're closing a loop of two dead-end water mains that have been dead-end for many years, we're trying to reinforce the system in numerous areas, you saw it on Forest Hill recently, where we had a special assessment project there, also on 27th Street, south of South Branch, we're trying to close those loops, make that system a little bit tighter. It improves water quality by having water circulate through the system and not lie in these dead ends, it improves fire protection by having flow from both sides to this area. This particular area, there's six properties, two ownerships, but it serves 335 residential units that are served off of these two dead-end lines, both off of 27th Street and then coming off of 20th Street, so it's really good to get this tied back together. It also really supports the businesses that are along 27th, close to College, that's all fed off of one line now as well, so if we ever had a water main break, those businesses would be shut down until we could get that fixed, so this helps to reinforce that as well. My brief description of the project.
Questions for Mike?
Mike, given that Alderman-Dukneak, 3rd District, given that that is the border between Milwaukee and Oak Creek, this isn't a combined project with the two municipalities?
No, it's not, no, the two water systems are separate that way, so we'll operate on the south side of College Avenue, we're actually going to construct in College Avenue to minimize disruption, we're going to use directional drilling to have a minimum amount of pavement restoration out there as well, so it should be a clean project.
What else?
Alderman-Guzikowski, 6th District, how did mailings go out for the homeowners? How does this all communicate it?
So that'll happen after this intent to special assess, then notices would go out, letting know of the public hearing that'll occur on March 5th.
Okay, thank you.
Hey Mike, just to clarify, special assessments on these properties are by frontage?
Yeah, property frontage along College Avenue, yes.
And how many property owners are involved?
Six properties, two property owners.
Any other questions for Mike? I know in years past, there have been some water issues, water did get off over the last 10 years due to this issue, so I didn't realize it served all of 27th. Yeah. That's really, I'm sure the businesses are really happy about that. Nothing else, motion, please.
Oracle move that the Common Council adopt Resolution 12030-020519, a preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment powers under Section 3.200 of the Municipal Code of the City of Oak Creek for installation of a 12-inch water main in West College Avenue, and to set a public hearing date of March 5th, 2019.
Dukneak, 2nd.
Roll call.
Alderman-Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Item 13 is consideration of a motion to award the purchase of a new Caterpillar backhoe loader to Fabric Cat, including the accessories for a total cost of $139,500. Ted's with us tonight.
Hi, it's pretty straightforward, we actually went and we tested all three of these vehicles, a John Deere case and a Caterpillar. Our guys really did prefer the Cat for several reasons, visibility, the ability to get their work closer to them so they could stay off of the roads, and the mechanics liked it better because ease of working on it, especially for some of the hoses and that, that seem to tend to break occasionally that we have to repair. It is a little more pricey than some of the other ones, but the backhoe that we will be turning in is 31-years-old, so these are pretty much long-term pieces of equipment, so we felt that the couple thousand dollars that we would spend additional for it would be well worth our money. The numbers that you see down here, the actual price for the equipment, the reason that it's $139,500 is because we're actually getting a breaker, forks, three buckets, and a clam for picking up brush and stuff like that during brush season, so that brings us up to $139,500, and this actually was a budget for $140,000.
Questions for Ted and Steve?
Alderman-Kurkowski, 1st District, Ted, what are you, I may have missed it, or don't see it, what are you doing with the old one?
We'll take that and put it on municipal auction.
Okay, great.
We've got a couple of items that we have to, we're waiting until we get a few things, and then we'll put them out at the same time.
Thanks. Any other questions? No, just kind of interesting that all three backhoes were, what is it, state companies? You had a choice of John Deere case or Caterpillar, so they're all pretty familiar names in the state.
Yeah, they're all on the state contract and on, but we've found better pricing on the NJPA contract, and that's the one that we took pricing off for this.
Very good. Nothing more, motion, please.
We'll move to approve the award of the purchase of a new Caterpillar 420F, two backhoe loader to Fab, Fabcat, including accessories for a total cost of $139,500.
Guzikowski, 2nd.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Item 14 is consideration of a resolution approving the Nucor Development Agreement for the design and installation of public improvements at 300, 301, 400, and 401 West Burkhart Court. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a development agreement for the, that covers the public improvements that are associated with the expansion of the Nucor facility at the corner of Burkhart Court and 6th Street. I have it up on the screen, the existing building is at the top of the page, the north part of the property, and then you can see the two future expansions, I believe it's phased, that would be two future expansions of the building then to the east and then to the south. And hard to see a lot of lines on this page, but there is a public water main, there is a storm sewer, and that there is a private interceptor sanitary sewer, and that is the purpose of the agreement, the agreement just outlines that they will be designed and installed to city standards, and also get approvals through the DNR and MMSD, and that the city would provide inspection of the facilities they are constructed.
All right, thank you, Mike. Gary, you want to say a few words, or no? Yes? Any questions regarding the agreement?
Jerry Ritchie, I'm the plant manager, manager of this facility, this is all developmental work at this point, we need to get the site ready, there were some wetland issues, we've already dealt with the DNR, it's a flood plain, we need to deal with all that part of it, there's some work we need to do because of the easements, the buildings you see on there, you know, we haven't decided what we're doing there yet, but we want to get, when we're ready to go, we're ready to go, so we want to get through the approval process. The building that runs north to south will definitely be future, our first phase will be the one on the south end of the property, I think you're all aware, I've heard about the truck availability and things like that, one of the first things we're looking at is potentially bringing steel in by rail, not shipping it out by rail because of our product, but just by bringing it in by rail to help with that challenge we have. So again, this is just to get ready for that type of stuff, and I'll try to answer any questions.
I just comment, and really nothing that's related to the engineering resolution, I've known Jerry and his company, Nucor, Cold Finish Wisconsin, 15 years, and at that time, Jerry and the, yeah, and the company were Oak Creek's best-kept secret, no one knew about them, and certainly, I can't say thank you enough, Jerry, to both you and Nucor for your involvement. I mean, this is a company that truly gives back to our community, I mean, sponsorship, I mean, I'm a little bit out of the loop now, but I know it was significant back in the day, and I still see the Nucor name all over a number of nonprofit group events and city events, so thank you so very much for everything that you and Nucor, Cold Finish Wisconsin, do for our community.
Well, thank you for those words, it's important to us, community involvement's very important, it's part of our culture, absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
You are part of the celebration.
Yep.
Very good.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jerry. Seeing no other questions, motion, please.
Kowski, make a motion to approve Resolution Number 12031-020519, approving the Nucor Development Agreement for the design and installation of public improvements at 300, 301, 400, and 401 West Burkhart Court.
Dukneak, 2nd.
Roll call.
Alderman-Dukneak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Item 15 and 16 are licensing, and I'd like to turn that over to Alderman-Kurkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Included in our packet was the Common Council report for a license committee. Item 5 might be something a little uncommon, so if anybody has a question with regards to number 5, I can answer that. If nobody has any questions whatsoever, I don't see any, which is good. So Kurkowski will make a motion to adopt the License Committee recommendations as listed on the February 5th, 2019 License Committee Report.
Dukneak, 2nd.
Roll call.
Alderman-Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
You got 16, Steve?
Oh, I do, I'm sorry. Anybody have any questions on item 16?
I just have a comment, Alderman-Dukneak, 3rd District. We did have a, an Oak Creek resident appear at our last License Committee meeting wishing to comment on this particular item, and we had mentioned to that resident to be here tonight to make comments, sure that the weather has prohibited that resident to be here. That resident is typically here at every single event for the last, or council meeting for probably the last 35 years, so I'm just wondering, do you have to afford that resident the opportunity to comment on this before we approve, or just move?
It's really not a public hearing, I mean, we would allow the person to speak, we never deny the right, but again, for explanatory reasons, we're expanding the licenses as we're growing.
I'm sure he would have had quite a few words to say on this topic.
Mayor Alderman-Kurkowski, the gist of it was that he was just concerned with the increase in the licenses and why, and obviously, it's a business issue, we have businesses growing and we have a need, so, you know, we took in the various factors, what we could have done with regards to expanding it even more, keeping it as is, and we kind of hit the middle ground as to.
Keep control.
Yeah, yes.
And I think it was unanimous with the committee on what we eventually did end up deciding to do.
We could, we counted three or four off the top of our head.
Right, that were coming in, yep, that were going to be in need of licenses.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
Kurkowski will make a motion to consider ordinance Number 2928 to repeal and recreate Section 7.84 Sub I Sub 1 of the Oak Creek Municipal Code relating to the quotas for liquor licensing.
Dukneak, 2nd.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Toman.
Item number 17 is our January vendor summary report, please look it over, and any questions? Bridgette is here to answer.
I could just make a comment on item number 14 for Telecom Fitness, you may have read in either your monthly report or your same-page report that with the assistance of the city treasurer, the city engaged in a review of all of our phone lines essentially, and this is the first round of payment to Telecom Fitness for what they found. So they found over $28,000 of savings to date, at this point, they're still going, this was essentially what they would consider the easy savings, whether it's taxes that we've been charged that we shouldn't be charged, and they can go back a certain number of years to retain or receive that as a rebate or refund to the city, and they had zero fees or expenses unless they found savings for us, and then they got 50% of that savings, so this is a, you know, one-time payment right now for this, but going into the 2019 budget, we're already realizing a $28,000 savings, so just wanted to point that out. Kevin from IT has been working hand-in-hand with this company.
Bridgette Alderman-Dukneak, so is that the net, 28 grand, so they got 28 and the city?
No, half, half for them.
So 14 is our net savings.
But when we look in reality going forward, it's going to be 28,000 of savings, they just receive 50% of the first year.
On the first, great, oh, good.
Any other questions? Seeing none, motion?
We'll move to approve the January 30, 2019 Vendor Summary Report in the combined total amount of $615,116.73.
Guzikowski, 2nd.
Roll call.
Alderman-Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Toman.
Item 18 is consideration of a motion to convene and close session pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes to discuss the following. A, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub G to consider the claim of the Ridge Community Church Corp. for unlawful taxes pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 74.35 for the property at 6912 and 6912 R. South 27th Street. Tax key numbers 737-9026000, 73799028000. And B, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E and Sub G to discuss the amend, amendment to the tax increment District Number 11 Finance Development Agreement and Phase 3 Agreement for Emerald Road Development.
Ken?
Thank you, Mayor. Gail, move to convene and close session pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes to discuss the following. A, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub G to consider the claim of the Ridge Community Church Corp. for unlawful taxes pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 74.35 for the property at 6912 and 6912 R. South 27th Street. B, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E and Sub G to discuss the amendment to the tax incremental District Number 11 Finance Development Agreement and Phase 3 Agreement for the Emerald Road Development.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
We will now convene and close session and resume at its conclusion.
Session.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Which leads us on to item 21. Ken?
Greg, you want to?
Greg, you want to go? Sure. Lorik moves to adopt Resolution Number 12032-020519, allowing the claim of the Ridge Community Church Corp. to auth, and authorizing rescission of general property taxes for the property at 6912 and 6912 R. South 27th Street.
Dukneak, second.
Roll call.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
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 Gets us to adjournment. Just before adjournment, just for the general public, traffic conditions are slippery. Our road crews are out there working. Give them a break. Please stay clear of the clouds. Drive with caution. Show some patience. Appreciate everybody's patience for the street department. They were out there working hard last week during the cold and snow. Appreciate that. February 11th, just to repeat, we do have the premiere of Around the Corner with John McGivern at the Community Center. Hope to see you all there. And the 16th is our Winter Fest here at Drexel Town Square. So with that, adjournment, please.
Kirkowski will make a motion to adjourn. Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Good night.